Okay, it is 6:35, so I'm gonna call the board back into session. We did start with a committee of whole and we did call the meeting to order with roll call and a proof of notice and we did approve the agenda. So we are now, it is Monday, June 10th, 2024. We at the OSD Innovation Center at Oregon High School. So we are at, on the agenda, we were at B consent calendar, so I'm going to read the following donations. $1,000 from the Oregon Masonic Lodge for Oregon Brooklyn Lions Club Scholarship. $1,000 from Wisconsin Masonic Foundation for the Oregon Brooklyn Lions Club Scholarship. $500 from Summit Credit Union for the Summit Credit Union Scholarship. $577.14 from the FES PTO as a donation toward FES teacher requests and dictionaries for the third grade classes. $339 from multiple FES families that goes toward the FES 2023-2024 field trips. $100 from Lisa Sheel, donation to food service for families in need. $90 from the Oregon PTO for a PTO donation for staff chaperones for the NQ8, Netherwood Knoll's second grade field trip. $30 from Todd and Fiona Thompson as a donation to the OMS Band. $80 from Kona Ice of Madison LLC as a donation to OMS. $630 from Karate America in Oregon, a donation from the Parents Night Out event. $219.76 from the Friends of the Orchestra, which is a reimbursement of transportation costs, which is two buses for the OMS orchestra to take three performance. And then $3,441.90 from the Oregon Coral Boosters for tickets and transportation for FES RCI and OMS choir students to attend a performance at the Overture Center. And then $1,173.96 from the FES PTO for three picnic tables for the walking path. $100 from Andy Wyland and $100 from Jason Zurich for the Admin Scholarship. And then $265.22 from the FES PTO as a donation toward sixth grade send off celebration. So thank you to all of those individuals and entities for supporting our students and our staff at the Oregon School District. Okay, so that is part of the consent calendar, so I will entertain a motion to approve that consent calendar. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to information items. See one is public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Do we have any, okay. Anyone here for public comment? One more time, anyone here for public comment? Okay, moving on to two. OEA report, we do have Nate Johnson from OEA, so Nate, if you want to come up, and you've got the floor.
Perfect. All right, I'll start again. My name's Nathan Johnson, I'm a science teacher at the high school, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as a member of the OEA Board of Directors. On tonight's agenda is both ratifying the temporary agreement, tentative agreement for the collective bargaining agreement between the Oregon School District and the Oregon Education Association, as well as next year's educator compensation plan. So I just wanted to share a few thoughts leading into that agenda item tonight. First and foremost, I and the whole of the OEA are so thankful to be in a district where we value teacher voice and teachers are a welcome participant at the table. We always feel like when teachers come to the table with our school board, with our administration, that teacher voice is heard in that district, and that really makes a difference to having quality education in this district. While we have some challenging conversations when we come to the table, and nobody always gets exactly what they want, we have a conversation that leads us to a point where we can all get on the same page. We generally are reaching common ground in the end and can walk out of the room to say, you know what? Everybody involved found a way to get where we needed to go out of these conversations, and we so appreciate having a district where we can have those hard conversations and reach common ground, rather than some of the contentious things that happen in other places. And even bigger thank you to the wider community of the Oregon School District. The referendum to fund our schools and in particular, fund teacher compensation is all the difference in the world. That financial support that our community is giving the district, it makes a world of difference in recruiting and retaining quality teachers and bringing the quality education that we all want our students in the Oregon School District to have. And that really shows the community recognition of how much they value strong schools in building a strong community, and so thank you to our wider community as well for that. And the other thing I want to bring forward to the board here, as well as to anyone watching at home, is just how important it is that Wisconsin as a state needs to honor its responsibility to properly fund education. We cannot keep relying so heavily on local property taxes to fund education. The state needs to take its share of the responsibility in properly funding schools, and until we do, we're gonna lean too heavily on local taxpayers or just underfund schools. And I'm so thankful to have a community that's willing to put up the money to fund our schools, but that's not the way the system was designed, and we really need state government to pick up the slack and properly fund education. So I want to urge our community members to advocate with the state government to properly fund schools, as well as to investigate candidates' voting history and positions on properly funding education, and really consider all their interactions, both voting and interactions with representatives, that funding education is a critical role that our state needs to uphold. It's really critical for education in Wisconsin that the state no longer abdicate its responsibility to fund education, and until such point as they do, we are so thankful that the Oregon School District community is providing ongoing strong support of education in our district to keep us going strong until the state picks up its end of what it needs to be doing.
Thank you, Nathan. We appreciate your comments, and as another school year comes to a close, we really appreciate all the work that all of our educators have done this year. You are professional, you are skilled, you connect with our students, and we know the job continues to get more challenging, and we recognize the work that you all do. We are so thankful, and on behalf of our community, we want to let everyone in this room and everyone that's watching and all of your counterparts, let them know that we really trust the work that they do with our most valuable resource, which is our kids. So thank you so much. Okay. Next on the agenda is our student report, and speaking because it is summer, our students are no longer with us, so we'll look forward to having new students in the fall. So we will move on to de-action items. The first is the CISA II contract, and so I will turn that over to Dr. Bergstrom.
Thank you. This is something that we come to the board for every year, and it's in part membership to CISA II, which is able to provide us with professional resources and access to their professional development, which is really outstanding. But the significant part of the contract is also our access to higher services from CISA II when necessary. So Candace is going to describe a little bit to you regarding what we utilize our relationship with CISA II to accomplish.
First night with a new mic. Yes, so the primary thing that we have on our contract with CISA II is audiology. We have a number of students who receive audiology services. They get some consultation with our deaf and heart of hearings teacher, and there's some equipment repair, so we have kids who have hearing aids, cochlear implants, personal FM systems. All of those things require some contact with the audiologist and some care from that person. So you see here, our request is for you to approve our contract to continue that service with CISA II.
All right, we'll start with anyone have any clarifying questions for Dr. Wydensey. Go ahead, Heather.
My two very quick questions are just to gain a little historical perspective. Is the price consistent with the contract last year? Did it go up in a large way? And are the services or the benefits that we're getting from this also, you know, what has been the change versus last year on both of those items?
So the service has gone up some. It's gone about $7,000 for the overall contract. We've increased our numbers of students that have audiology services by just a couple, two or three. Those change a little bit. We've had some graduates, we've had some kids come in with different needs, so the pricing structure in general has increased from CISA II. The services are, remain consistent. It's the same audiologist we've had for several years. She's really good, she knows the kids and families, and so there's a benefit to that, but it is an increase, and it increased the year prior to, so.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the CISA II contract.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lacuda?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkert?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Candace. All right, moving on to 2024-2025 additional open enrollment spaces. I believe I'll turn that over to Dr. Bergstrom.
Thank you. Ms. Jonen will be the primary person to discuss this particular purple or this action item. However, one of the things I do want to say is that, is to give the conversation some context, particularly for anybody who's listening from home, and that is that when we're talking about open enrollment, we're talking about ways to create efficiencies within our system, to make sure that the class sections that we have to have for resident students are utilized effectively, because sometimes we end up with sections that are very small, and it would be too much to combine them, but it ends up being very inefficient class sizes if you keep, if you just have what you need for resident students. So we use open enrollment as a tool to create efficiencies within our district, not to add sections specifically for open enrolled students. I think that's a really important distinction for people within the community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jonen.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. So we are recommending that the board approve additional spaces tonight in four-year-old kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade. This would allow us in all of those grade levels to increase enrollment in current sections. So just to emphasize, this would not entail us having to add additional sections. So for 4K, we are recommending that we add approval of additional 11 spaces, kindergarten an additional 15 spaces, and first grade an additional three spaces. In all of the other grades, there were either enough applications, four spots the board originally designated, or looking at our current resident, there aren't room in those grades. Adding more spaces would have us go over our class guidelines.
Ms. Jonen, could you also just quickly, as a historical reference, kind of give people the timeline here, that this is our second look at this, and then what your, the rest of the summer looks like in terms of enrollment?
Yes, thank you. So by state law, the board sets the spaces in January at its meeting, and then families have until the end of April to apply, and then the registrar sends out the acceptance or denial letters in the first week of June, and once those go out, so those went out on Friday, then the Monday after that Friday, which would be today, then the board can open up additional spaces, but a board cannot decrease spaces once that space is set in January. And I should also add, in January, we took a look at if we had any room for students who needed programming and special education, and we did not. And given the resident needs that we have, we continue tonight to recommend that we not approve additional spaces in programming for special education because of the needs our current students have.
Okay, I'll open it up for questions for Ms. Jonen. Go ahead, Mary.
Do we have any estimate or knowledge of when occupancy is gonna start on those newly constructed complexes over, close to Mulligan's?
By Mulligan's? That I don't know. I don't know if Dr. Bergstrom or Mr. Wyland knows.
Well, they're obviously under construction already. Mostly those are apartments, though. We wouldn't anticipate to have a lot of students coming from them, at least we haven't from the facility, rentals that have been built in the last year or two.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure how big those apartments were.
Mostly, I think, one and two bedrooms. For the most part, there are a couple townhomes, but there are not many. That's kind of on the eastern side of that area.
Right.
But yeah, we don't anticipate many coming from there. Really, our biggest impact that we foresee is gonna be the Veridian area, which is on the north side of town, and that is starting to develop. We haven't seen many kids come from there yet, I don't believe, but yeah, we'll kind of see how that comes. That is really where we anticipate. The other thing is Taravessa is, as Dr. Bergstrom just said, they're into their next phase. They have a couple phases plotted out already, past that phase, but they are building fairly quickly in that area, so we could see a little bit of uptick in that area as well.
So then, what have, has this recommendation taken into account the likelihood for growth from resident?
Absolutely. That is something we watch very carefully, and we didn't make the decision until Friday about the spaces, because we, thanks to Katie Heights, we monitor our enrollment on a daily basis, and then we also see where our enrollment is coming from. So we feel very confident with the approval of these spaces, that we will still have ample room for resident growth in these sections. Additionally, the nice thing about open enrollment, too, is that we, families apply to the district, but we determine placement. So we very carefully look at, so for example, Forest Edge in kindergarten is very full, and we know with Taravessa that we need to save room for resident growth. And so families may want to attend Forest Edge through open enrollment, but they may not be placed there because of the resident growth that we see coming. And so it is that careful balance, because we also know that if we don't place families in schools that they prefer, then they may decline to attend and attend somewhere else. So we try very hard to accommodate families, but our priority is the resident growth in the class sizes.
All right, additional questions? Okay, oh, go ahead, Anna.
So I just have a question about the assumptions that we would have made in January. So obviously, we are projecting a certain enrollment by the April timeline, or whatever the timeline is that we expect to see, and so I'm assuming that we were reserving some space for additional families we thought might be enrolling in those 4K or kindergarten or first grade classes. So overall, did we just not see that same number of students enrolled that is now creating this capacity for us to open up more open enrollment?
So very good question. So since we have to set the space in January and we're not able to decrease, we do tend to be conservative, particularly in 4K and in kindergarten, because those are families that may not have it on their radar to register before, you know, to register as early as January. So we don't necessarily know how many students are coming, and then we want to be cautious too, because families tend to move in spring and in summer. And so when you have to set spaces in January, that is very hard to predict if families are gonna move into the community, and we don't know that they're coming. So we want, we, at least since I have been here, I can speak to that we've had to stay conservative, especially at 4K and kindergarten. And so now by June 10th, we have done a lot of work, and thanks to Lindsay Engelhardt with our 4K families, to make sure that they all registered for kindergarten, or we know that they're attending somewhere else. We have, thanks to Erica Mundinger, have a lot of communication out to the community about, please register for kindergarten, we want to know that you're coming. So in June, we just have a higher comfort level that the families who are here have registered, and then we just look at our historical pattern of growth.
And then I have one final question. In the purple, it talked about, we added a section of kindergarten at Brooklyn. How many sections does that mean that we have in the kindergarten classes at each of the schools? Is that going to be a fifth section at Brooklyn, or is that, and how does that, I guess, work at the school as far as space?
Yeah, so we have been slowly transitioning Brooklyn to a three-section school, and, but given the resident growth that has been on and around Brooklyn, and we really kept a close eye on that to see if there's any way we could move the border of students attending Netherwood or Prairie View. And so we determined that, given the growth in and around Brooklyn, that we had to add that fourth section of kindergarten at Brooklyn, regardless of this open enrolled recommendation. And so what this recommendation really does is help us fill that section, because we determine placement for open enrollment. And so that will mean that Brooklyn, that kindergarten will be a fourth section, and we do not make that decision lightly, because that section will likely follow through until at least fourth grade, because then in fourth grade, the class size guidelines go up to 25. And so we're carefully monitoring that, because we've seen more growth come from that area than some of the studies have predicted. And then we have four sections at Netherwood and three sections at Prairie View in kindergarten, so we have room for that growth on the west side of Oregon, and that's helpful, because we can even out placement of class sizes in those two buildings. And then we now have three sections of kindergarten at Forest Edge. And so we have, we have reserved room for that Taravessa-Fitchburg growth. So if we, you know, our enrollment has, with birth rates going down, we've carefully monitored that, but we do have room for additional sections at Prairie View in town, should we need that in the future.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Caleb.
Just a quick question in terms of numbers. Do we have a sense, or can you tell us what the net looks like in terms of people having families and open enrolling their students or their kids out of the district, and then what we have coming in? Do we have, do we know what that is in terms of a net, plus minus? I was just curious.
I know that we looked at that approval meeting. Katie, do you know that, otherwise I can provide that to board members later.
Typically, we have around 90 out and over 300 in. That's not new applications, that's like every, you know, year over year.
Yes, yes, good question. We have a pretty net positive in that area, and that's why it helps us financially and works to help residents as well. So, okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Please, someone put a motion on the floor.
I'll move to approve the open enrollment additional spaces as laid out in the purple.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Lacuda?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkert?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Okay, moving on to two policies that came from the policy committee, and I was gonna say Heather, but we have a new chair of policy, which is Dr. Lacuda. So we will start with you, Dr. Lacuda, on policy 931.
Excellent, thank you. So yeah, the policy committee met and discussed at length two policies, and the, the goal was to allow for camera use on transportation for, for our school district. The reason that this has come up is it, it has become a requirement of some insurance companies to include cameras to be installed on their buses in order to retain coverage. And so policy, let's see, which one's first, 931, really was aimed at updating language to accommodate camera systems on, on our district transportation. There were some additional minor language updates. Gina, what would you like to add?
I think that covered it well.
All right, so since it's coming from policy, do you want to put the motion on the floor?
I'd be happy to, yeah. I'd like to move that we approve 931 policy as shown in the board packet.
Okay, it does not need a second, because it came from the policy committee, so now we will open it up for discussion. Go ahead, Troy.
Yeah, I have one recommendation for a minor change to some language in the, it's in the second, in the first paragraph in the second sentence. I'd like to just add some additional wording, and this rationale is really to help to confine the camera system usage to OSD-related purposes, as we will now, if this were to pass, will now have 20 or 30 mobile surveillance systems roaming around the community every day, and I anticipate we could get some requests for using that footage for, from community residents, and I would just like to, like to recommend a little bit of a change to some language, just to clarify that this is truly for the school district purposes. So I'll just read the sentence, which includes the language changes. So I would propose, "These systems will be used for the purpose of maintaining a safe and orderly educational and transportation environment, for identifying disciplinary issues, for minimizing theft and vandalism, to Oregon School District and district contractor property, and for enforcing district policies and rules."
Okay, so is that, that's a formal amendment to the, okay. So is there a second to that amendment?
Could you read through that one more time?
Sure, Mary, sure. "These systems will be used for the purpose of maintaining a safe and orderly educational and transportation environment, for identifying disciplinary issues, for minimizing theft and vandalism, to Oregon School District and district contractor property, and for enforcing district policies and rules."
Okay, so that amendment is made. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that amendment? Go ahead, Heather.
I like it, and this may be semantics, but it doesn't, it doesn't read that, that that's all, it reads to me like minimizing theft and vandalism for the Oregon School District is not identifying, that identifying disciplinary issues isn't part of that. And if, well, again, I'm hearing this twice, like, and not writing it down, but I just want to make sure that, Gina, you can put your legal eye on that, but it, it doesn't sound inclusive of the rest of that information for OSD. And I have a question, is that now the time I can do that, or is this?
Is it related to the amendment?
No, it's related to the original. So only amendment things hold?
We're just discussing the amendment right now.
Holding.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
So in general, I'm, I'm open to this amendment, but I would like some clarification from you, Gina, to make sure that this language doesn't, for example, limit the use of the external cameras in the event that someone fails to stop for the stop arm, or something along those lines.
I would say it does not, because that's part of a safe educational and transportation environment. My only comment would be instead of OSD, if we could just say district, because that's more consistent with our language and other policies. But otherwise, I do believe that would-
Do you accept that friendly? All righty.
So can, how, how does it read now? Educational and transportation environment, for identifying disciplinary issues, for minimizing theft and vandalism, to-
District.
-district and district contractor policies?
And enforcing district policies and rules.
Properties. So to, to the district and district contractors, properties, okay.
So Gina, does that, again, does that, does identifying disciplinary issues, does that carry over to the district? Because the way that it reads, it's just identifying disciplinary issues, for minimizing theft and vandalism of the district, not disciplinary issues of the district.
So you're asking about the qualifier for disciplinary?
Yes, thank you.
I hadn't thought about it, because I was thinking, what would be other disciplinary things that wouldn't be district? Or the driver? But I'm thinking how someone else could interpret that, or how to write it differently. It makes sense.
I think the one thing that could is, if some, if something happens that impacts a bus, but is not by a student on a bus, that could result in disciplinary issues, correct? So if, so let's say a student driver, the bus arm is out, a student driver in their own car, would that result in a district disciplinary issue, or is that firmly a police department? So that would not be defined as disciplinary, that's criminal, or?
Unless it was on our property, or if it, if we actually owned that particular bus, which we don't right now.
So I'm hearing you say disciplinary infers district. Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. Katie, could you please call the roll, and we are just voting on the amendment at this point in time.
Mr. Pinkert?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lacuda?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, amendment passed at seven zero. Now we move to discussion of the policy. So it's on the floor. Who would like to ask questions or have discussion on the rest of the policy and the changes that came forth from the policy committee? Heather, you had a question?
Yeah, I don't know if this is kosher to ask, but if we, can I just understand how this came from the policy committee? Was it unanimous, or?
Yes.
Perfect. I didn't, if I-
All right, any other, most of the board members were at the policy committee, so just to let everyone know, we had extensive, multiple meetings, discussion about this philosophically, as well as practically, and what that means. So- So, any other questions or discussions? One thing I will bring up, and Leslie, or sorry, Gina, I would like you to talk about, I think it's important that we ask the audio question, and I think it's important that you just reference that in terms of this is video at this point in time, and if it, so I'll let you comment on that.
So, unlike our, unlike the cameras in our school facilities, the camera system that will be installed on the buses, if it is approved tonight, would have the capacity to do audio as well as video. There are additional legal protections for people, arguably, when it comes to audio. There is a lot of case law around that particular question, and I do feel like there is a balance that we could do legally, should the board be interested in us turning on that audio function, but for the purposes of the extensive discussion in policy, the recommendation right now was that this be video only. And we understand that if it's approved, that the board is authorizing us to do video and not audio at this time. We will be tracking data in terms of the behavior on the bus, and may come back with a recommendation in the future about audio.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Wieland or Dr. Bergstrom, if you have any comments about this policy, or want to have anything?
I just think it's an important piece of helping create safe and orderly environments on the bus, because it's really critical to our students that they start their day in a way that makes them feel like they are safe and taken care of, and I think that the relationships they currently have with their drivers, that's a really big part of it. But also knowing that if something does happen, we can figure out how it happened and resolve the situation without having it take days and days of principal time. So, timely resolution of concerns students have on the bus, I think that will go a long way to helping them feel safer and better about transportation as a whole.
I would agree, and I'd like to echo that. A lot of the discussion we had is this, it makes things better for students, for our bus contractors, for our staff and our educators, who are spending a ton of time trying to understand what happened on the bus. So, this is really something that we don't take lightly, but it's really something that we feel is going to be, create a better environment, and safety is very important to our families. Our families report a high level of safety within our school district, and we want to maintain that. So, Leslie, did you have something?
So, I just wanted to put my full support in for this policy. I think it is definitely something we need in our district. However, I would also like to say that I would strongly support having audio on these cameras, or on the video, as well as audio, to enable our investigations into situations to go that one step further and be that much easier for administration and for the safety of our children.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, go ahead, Caleb.
I just have one really, really quick comment that I think is worth noting. And in the background information for this policy, I think one of the things that was striking when I was looking at it was, and this is not a reason to do something, but because everybody else is doing it, but what I wanted to say is that, what was notable is that we are, in terms of the region, this is a very common policy across school districts around the region. And so, in many ways, this is something that other districts are doing, and we're just kind of implementing something that's already been done other places. Not that that's, like I said, reason for doing something, because everybody else is doing it, but I think that it's important to point out that this is fairly standard practice now, and that's important.
All right, thank you. Okay, going once, going twice. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Just to confirm, this is on Mary's motion?
That is correct, so no second is needed.
Ms. Dr. Lacuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. All right, back to Mary for policy 751, transportation.
All right, so along the same lines, in order to have cameras on the buses, the district buses, we have modified policy 751, which is the transportation policy, and added a section, which is 75, let's see, I'm not finding it. I want to say it was 75103, but, oh yeah, there it is. Just wasn't finding it. Okay, yes, section 75103, laying out the use of cameras on the bus. Gina, what would you like to add?
I would just add two things, is when we go between Google and Board Docs, there's some formatting issues, so we will certainly clean those up, so please ignore those. Katie's wonderful at that. And then, you'll notice that one part is highlighted, that's something Mr. Wieland and I talked about, that's just in the guidelines part, so that's not for board approval, but just to let you know, we did recommend changing the guidelines. It used to say 40, 48 hours, and the recommendation is two school days. But otherwise, I think Dr. Lacuta summed it up nicely.
All right, Mary, I will let you make your motion.
So, this comes from the policy committee, and again, at the vote to recommend approval was three to nothing. So, I make a motion to approve policy 751, transportation, as shown in the packet.
All right, the motion does not need a second, so now the floor is open for any discussion on policy 751 as brought forth by the policy committee. Any further discussion? Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Lacuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Mary. Okay, moving on to action item five, which is cancellation of the June 24th board meeting again. First meetings, or the first meeting of the month, which is the second Monday, is mandated by statute. The fourth is not, but we typically do. If we are going to cancel that, we put it as an action item on the agenda, and our team will be at or coming back from the Sale Academy, so we want to make sure that they, as school gets out and they do their work, that they have a breather too. So, we are proposing to cancel that meeting, so I will entertain a motion to do so. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the cancellation of that meeting? All right, hearing none, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Dr. Lacuta?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thanks, everybody. Okay, moving on to E, discussion items, committee reports. I'll just go back to the chairs quickly for them to announce their next meeting date. So, Heather with visioning.
We'll be meeting, visioning committee will be meeting July 9th at 6:00 PM, and Katie will be sending out a calendar invite.
Okay, Mary.
Policy meeting will be on 25th of June, and I believe that's on the calendar as of earlier today.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. Committee of the whole, as we announced, that the board did have a workshop with district administration. We had a really fun evening, dreaming about being a destination district. What does that mean? What is the differentiator, and who do, what do we want to be known for? So, we had a discussion about that, which is kind of a precursor in terms of visioning work, and then will lead into policy work. So, we look forward to having those discussions in visioning and maintaining the high standards that we have here as the Oregon School District, and what's that, what that looks like into the future. And so, we'll have more fruitful discussions in that regard. Okay, moving on to B, wellness committee. And I believe that is Dr. Lacuta, and I just realized, Mary, you've got a really full calendar of board work. Sorry about that.
That's okay, that's all right. And let's see, I don't recall when the wellness committee was, it was maybe a month or so ago, but I don't recall the date. So, Oregon Area Food Pantry Director Sherri Pollack always typically attends. One of the comments that she made was that there's been a 70% increase from last school year to this school year in usage. 280 new people in 92 households were added this year. So, they have a significant need, and any, any help that the remainder of the community can give to the Oregon Area Food Pantry is extremely welcome. A few stats that she shared, seniors represent 15% of the serviced population, and that percentage has actually decreased, whereas the percentage of students has increased. She did comment that the, there are a number of drives that the Oregon School District is involved in, and they are very beneficial. But they are looking for additional student groups who would like to volunteer. Otherwise, across the various schools, I'm just going to kind of call out one or two individual things. Brooklyn had a sleep challenge that was aimed at promoting good, healthy sleep habits, which I think was, is very essential for everyone, for learning and just overall well-being. Forest Edge has mindfulness focus in the classrooms to help ground the learners throughout their days, which is also important to wellness. The high school has been, in the health classes, has been focusing on health and well-being. Alcohol and other drugs of addiction and safe decision-making have been some of the focuses of their conversations. And, yeah, and Prairie View, so they decorated lunch bags as part of their service, and those lunch bags then were used by the food pantry to give sack lunches. So, they were very, very welcome. Thank you.
Maybe we want to do a board sleep challenge. That's really cool. That's really cool. Thanks, Mary, appreciate you being on that committee and that report. Okay, moving on to F, information items, which means it is Dr. Bergstrom's part of the agenda.
Well, thank you, and, ooh, this is, I might put it back just a little bit. Okay, so, visioning a strategic framework, we went through this in our work session this evening to talk about how all of the different things were working together, and how much progress we've made on each of the components of our framework over the past couple of years. And the key piece is that we added a priority six to the Board of Education strategic priorities, which are now going from 2024 to 2028. And you can see there, the sixth priority is enhancing the educational setting for current and future generations. And I think a lot of the board time and energy is going to be in priority six in the upcoming year, and it's exciting, upcoming years, and it's exciting to know all that is possible based on our work session earlier this evening. And then, our goals, meaning the district office goals, we have five of them, and we are definitely reexamining them as we attend the Sale Academy next week, which is the entire administrative team spending three days together, examining data and determining next steps. But this is the thing that is really going to take some time this evening, because we had so many exciting things happening at the end of the school year, and we didn't have a second board meeting in May. Consequently, we have a lot of good news to share. I also want to point out that we send the superintendent's report out to all staff the week that we have board meetings, that they're able to see all of the fun things that were shared. And we will also now begin to post these superintendent reports on the website, because we want the general public, if you're not watching the board meetings, we want you to be able to access some of this really cool stuff, and I'm excited to talk about tonight. And the first thing that I'm excited to talk about, and this is a little different from what we normally have in the superintendent's report, but on Friday, we are launching an updated website. And it's important to us for several reasons. We've been working on migrating to this website to a new platform, and Friday's the day, you'll see a fresh design and some new functionality that we're implementing based on the analytics and data of viewership on our current site. A few things that we have learned, for example, the new site will be optimized for mobile devices with the expandable menu located in the upper right-hand section of the page. That's really important, because most families are looking at the page on their phone. And so, now they'll be able to see an optimized version of it. It's been designed specifically for accessibility, another really important thing within our community, and it has the ability to translate content into a myriad of languages, which is another way that we're making the site accessible. Quick links and menus were selected based on what users most frequently use. So, when our staff or our family log into the site starting on Friday, it will look a little bit different. And we reference this in our end-of-the-year message to staff and families, but it's an exciting change, and the work of Erica Mundinger has really brought this to life, and we're excited to share it to the, with the community. We also have the opportunity to celebrate our retirees, and that is always a very special event. It's also, they're also celebrated at their school buildings, so this is an opportunity to celebrate people as a district office. So, our retirees, whether they were celebrated only at their building, or they, because they weren't able to attend this evening, or the wonderful retirees who did attend, we appreciate all of them and everything that they've done for our students. They really are the embodiment of the caring of professional educators, and we wish them all, all of our retirees, the very best. And we had a really enjoyable event, watching our young student, Matthew Viviani, receiving the Citizen Award from the Dane County Sheriff's Office. We went to watch him, Ms. Majewski, Ms. Deegan and I, and Ms. Mundinger, for the heroic efforts in calling 911 and performing CPR during an emergency situation. We were really proud of him, and there was a lovely story in The Observer. Netherwood had a picnic and a game day to celebrate the end of the school year, and the event was made extra special when one of our students surprised the school by bringing his own sound system, a homemade speaker playlist, and light show. This definitely added to the festivities, and we really love your creativity. In Brooklyn, they had a circus. Our Brooklyn kindergartners wowed their audience with their singing, acting, and dancing talents. What an incredible show from our young stars. We love seeing you perform. Prairie View worked together to earn a lunch outside. This was a school-wide celebration and a fun way to spend a beautiful afternoon outside. Throughout the school year, the students focused on a word each month, such as "helpful" for the letter H, in an effort to spell the word "panthers." So, congratulations on a great year to Prairie View. And Netherwood has some chickens. So, they, the chickens at school is, I can't even say it, an excellent idea. So, to bring the first grade literacy unit birds amazing bodies up close and personal, our teachers, parents, and administrators worked together to bring chickens to Netherwood Noel. So, in April, students eagerly awaited the eggs hatching, and since then have been excited to watch them grow from newborn chicks to full-grown chickens. And they named the chickens, oh, this is pretty cute, Pancake, Blueberry, Chickadee DDD, Spot, and Chippy. The five chickens are now living in the school arboretum in a coop that Mr. Mark and the first grader students built together. In addition to the chickens, a duck family's made their home in the arboretum. So, students enjoy seeing the mama duck and her, get this, 14 ducklings, swimming in the pond in the arboretum and waddling about, and often visiting the chickens in their coop. So, the first graders really had a good time with this and learned a lot. And an old standby, the Wax Museum. So, where can you find the likeness of Jennifer Aniston, Abe Lincoln, Harriet Tubman, Amelia Earhart, George Washington, and many others under one roof? The Forest Edge Elementary 5th Grade Wax Museum, that's where. Students worked hard researching different people, their life events, and the factors that contributed to their success, and they had the Wax Museum on Friday, the 24th. Caregivers, friends, and family came to be able to see these wax figures. Museum goers could also press each wax figures button to hear a little bit more about them. You can see one of the buttons on the picture. So, if you go up and press the button, the wax figure will talk to you. I'm sorry I missed that one, that would have been really fun. So, RCI has had some, the privilege to work and learn from 11 local professional musicians and educators. That's really cool. Students came up with great questions to ask their music clinicians, and all band students got to listen to them perform and share their expertise. So, the clinicians included Kate Lauriyan flute, Maddie Leishner on clarinet, Brian Husk on saxophone, Kristin Diedrichs on oboe, John Ailey on trumpet, Ann Ailey on horn, Kevin Fremood, excuse me, on baritone or euphonium, Malik Viall on trombone, Chris Fiol on tuba, Jeannie Hammers on percussion, and Janice Stone on bassoon. So, we're very grateful to the performers and educators to share their wealth of knowledge with our students. And Forest Edge students participated in the haiku competition, so congratulations to our three Forest Edge 4th graders, Addison, Luke, and Octavia, who were winners of the greater, let me just use the initials- who were winners of the greater, let me just use the initials, JDCALN Haiku Competition. I could guess, I think I know what that means, but I'd probably mess it up. And a celebration was recently held to honor this year's winners. The emcee of the event was Dr. Adam Kern, the UW Professor of Japanese Literature and Visual Culture. There were over 2,000 submissions by over, almost 900 students this year. So we're really proud of our participants. Great job. And congratulations to the students in grades 5 through 8, who were recently recognized and honored during the Greater Dane Anthology Project Publishing Ceremony at Wanaki High School. There were many care categories, excuse me, including art, poetry, cartoons, creative writing, and persuasive writing. And this is really cool, both in English and Spanish. So there were over 500 entries, and they were all judged, so being picked to be a published author was quite an honor. Each author was given a copy of their book, and one of the learners was even chosen to read her piece during the ceremony. Great job, you guys. That was terrific. Just like our Middle Level State Honors Band Project, congratulations to the 18 Oregon middle school students who were selected to perform, selected as a prioritized alternate or selected as an alternate for the 2024 WSMA Middle Level State Honors Project. So in April, students auditioned for an adjudicator, and students who were selected, for an adjudicator, and students who were selected will perform in October at the state conference. And it's really fortunate, our students get to perform or have some role in the state conference quite frequently, and I think that says a lot about the talents of our students and our fabulous teachers. The 8th grade German field trip, they took their annual field trip to Nuglaris, where they learned about Swiss immigration to the U.S. and life for settlers. They enjoyed a traditional Swiss lunch and explored the town to discover more history. And our 8th graders did their Lerner Park Community Project in May. They partnered with the Rotary Club for the annual Lerner Park Work Day. So throughout the day, students worked to remove invasive species, plant native grasses, and maintain walking trails. And we love it when our students get to put their learning in action like this and provide a service to a local community. It's really a great example of strong family and community partnerships. Our students do a terrific job. And then congratulations to our Oregon High School student artists who participated in the Wisconsin Junior Duck Stamp Conservation and Design Contest. We had a really good showing. As a matter of fact, we took five of the top nine positions. I know, isn't that great? So first, first place was Kelvin Anderson, second place Sarah Waterworth and Abby Christensen, third place Amber Norland and Mars Hammersley. And we had honorable mentions for Medeline Oplinger, Poppy McCauley, Moss Erdman, Lilian Karns, Alice Rehen, Nicholas Walters, Theo Smith, Ella Carlson, Sidney Shaw, Medeline Outhouse, and Anna Schwantes. Can you believe that? Five of the top nine positions were from Oregon. That's really cool. We love seeing their art and their creativity, which was on full display at the Badger Conference Art Show. We recently hosted the whole event, and so our art gallery was put to beautiful use. And then there was a show up in our, or a presentation up in our Innovation Center. So I love seeing our facilities used to honor all the artists in the area. So our students, who were represented in the Badger Conference Art Show, Abby Christensen, Lydia Muhbrendan Simmons, Daniela Rhodas, Maisy Patterson, Brendan Simmons, Liz Sorbet, Theo Smith, and Savannah Walker. So congratulations. We were, Oregon was crowned the Badger Conference Art Champions Large Division. So way to go, kids. And teachers Mike Derrick and Heidi Coutray, because obviously they play a big role in cultivating the talent of our students. Home construction program, I don't know how many of you were able to go see the new house that they built, but boy, was it a beauty. Mr. Prowl's home construction class recently showed off all of this meticulous work at an open house event. Each year, students work with local contractors to learn all the various trades in residential construction. When I spoke to one of the students about what was your favorite, favorite part of the process, the student said the framing. So I thought that was really interesting, because I wonder how many people think of the framing as the best part in building a house, but it just goes to show you that they're exposed to every component of the build, and they're able to find out what they're really drawn to. Then our Avid students had their senior showcase. This was the, as I said, the senior showcase to show off their learning and their student portfolios. And it's really, really terrific, because the Avid students go through a program that brings them together as a mini-community within the school, and you can see on their post-its, their before and now. For example, "I was shy and unsure about my plans after high school," that's their before. Their now, "I have a plan, and I'm excited for what I have coming in my future." That's really all we want for all of our kids. And so I'm really excited that Avid helps so many students get there. This is adorable. Ms. Coutray's high school ceramic students recently did a collaborative project with Netherwood Knoll kindergarten students from Ms. Smith's and Ms. Burns classes. So the kindergarteners drew self-portraits, and then the ceramic students translated the flat imagery into beautiful 3D sculptures to give back to the students. Students on both ends were really happy with the result, and we love this collaborative project.
Heather and I have just found our latest new fundraiser for the Oregon School.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
I know. That is the coolest thing ever.
And speaking of awesome, the Oregon High School GSA Student Organization recently hosted Pride in the Park. It was a community event held at Waterman Triangle Park. The celebration was beautifully organized and included face painting, stations for creating buttons and bracelets, and there were some really good student speeches. And thanks to the Oregon Public Library for offering free book selections and onsite checkout. That was really cool, too. So we're proud of the students who worked so hard to create a safe and inclusive environment for each and every student at our high school. And they did, they kicked off Pride Month in a fantastic way by having such a fun and inclusive event, and they're going to be featured in an upcoming podcast. We also want to say congratulations to the school district musicians who received an exemplary performance nomination of the 2024 State Solo and Ensemble Festival. This is really quite impressive. Olive Anderson for her alto solo, June Berquist for B clarinet solo, Carolyn Canny for violin solo, Erin Dieter on marimba and xylophone solo, Lorenz Fratkanannon on a violin, Jack Khalil on viola, Simon Nimsek on marimba and xylophone, Augustus Sampson on the clarinet, Erin Dieter and Simon Nimsek on the keyboard mallet duet, OHS Concert Corral on the vocal ensemble, OHS percussion on their ensemble, and OHS saxophone choir. That's, for exemplary performance, that's quite a list, as far as the number of students who are able to attain that level of honor at solo and ensemble. That's great work. Congratulations, everybody. We also had a really good end-of-the-year celebration for Be a Champion Mentor Program, and for the mentors and the mentees, it was a really good day for a picnic and a great way to celebrate a wonderful year. The Be a Champion Mentor Program is a collaboration between the Friends of Oregon School District and the OSD, and the program pairs 4th through 8th grade students with a caring adult who becomes that student's champion. So mentors and mentees meet for about an hour each week. They engage in activities such as games and crafts and going for walks. It's not a tutoring program, it's a program all about making a connection and making sure the student knows that they have someone else in their life who really cares about them. The ultimate goal is to develop this positive relationship and have an adult committed to the student's well-being. We have over 70 community members engaged in this program. That's pretty cool. And they're always looking for more volunteers, and we'll be having a presentation on this later this summer. We also had a district art show. It was a beautiful evening for this event, and it was at the actual art gallery at the high school. Selected students and their families, and it was, they were selected by the art teachers, were invited to the high school gallery to get a special certificate and view the art pieces in a really formal setting, right? They're in an art gallery with all of these people coming to see their work. It's a really special group of artists and the art educators who support them. Oh, and this is something else. Congratulations to Henry Kreckman. He's the, oh my gosh, let me see if I can, National Institute for Athletic Administrators Association Scholarship. So that's the national ADs, athletic directors, right? He is the Wisconsin nominee for the national honor. That is really, really cool. He's going up right now against nominees from Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, and Michigan. Nice job, Henry. And then we have a whole bunch of regional championships this spring, girls soccer, softball, and boys lacrosse. We also had one sectional championship at our girls soccer team that was pretty fun this weekend, and they're now headed to the state tournament on Friday morning for an 11:00 game. Buy your tickets early. And we have a lot of Badger Conference athletes, a lot of students that were honored. You can see on here, we have students represented for baseball, softball, lacrosse, boys and girls, girls soccer, and we have Badger Conference Coach of the Year for the lacrosse team, girls lacrosse. That is really something else, as far as representation of our students in the best of the best for athletics. Our boys state tennis, our boys tennis team went to the state tournament at Nielsen Tennis Stadium in Madison. The state qualifiers were Jerry Zhang, Braden Bachin, and Hayden Lawrence. So good job, you guys. We also had students who qualified for state in track and field. We sent two boys and 12 girls to the state meet in lacrosse. So excellent job, everybody. And then comes, oh, took a second, the last day of school. It was a really great last day, lots of celebration, lots of looking forward to the future, very, very sweet. We had a great 8th grade moving on ceremony. Every school has a little end-of-the-year tradition, and they're all meaningful. But one of the most meaningful end-of-the-year traditions is when our graduates walk at the elementary schools. So if you haven't had the opportunity to see the pictures from this, I encourage you to take a look at one of the Facebook or Instagram posts, because it really shows a lot of joy. The kids that, almost adults, soon-to-be graduates, really enjoy going back and seeing many of their teachers in the schools. And the teachers even have, some of them even have pictures of their kindergarten class or their first-grade class, so the students can come and see themselves and see the same person and know that there's a lot, there are a lot of adults within the school system who care very deeply about them. And sometimes when you're in high school and you're 18 years old, you might forget that your first grader, your second-grade teacher remembers you and still cares about you. So this is a great thing for our graduates, but also for the little kids to think of who they want to emulate. They created banners and signs and fancy hats, and it was really fun. And then yesterday, the Class of 2024 Commencement Ceremony, and those of you who were there, you know the high school gym was filled with a lot of joy. You see, look at all this, look at all the people. That's only half of it, everybody. So it was a very, very full gymnasium, full of lots and lots of happy people. And then, you know, it takes many people to make an event like this come together, including our staff, our families, and our community, and you can see some great examples of that And then we have a lot of amazing students, and this is just a small snapshot of our wonderful graduates, and there are many, many more coming to social media soon. But this class truly embodies the essence of portrait of a graduate. Their futures are really bright. We can't wait to see what they do. And I have a feeling we'll be hearing many, many stories about their great adventures to come. So congratulations, Class of 2024. Aren't they, aren't they, they're all great. I love it. And then just remember to tune into the podcast, because those fabulous speakers from Sunday, they did a, we did a podcast with them that aired last Thursday. And the big surprise that we didn't talk about on the podcast, because we didn't want to ruin it for the parents, is Ada Marson saying and played the guitar to Fleetwood Max's Landslide. And it was beautiful, beautiful, and her family didn't know it was coming, so imagine how emotional that was for them.
It was. That was a pitch.
We just had some pre-coaching about how we were going to get through the ceremony. All right, thank you so much. That was fantastic. So moving into G Closing, our, because we canceled the second meeting of June, our next meeting is July 8th. And now we'll move into checkout before we go to close session, so I want to do a little something special. It's the end of the school year, we just saw a lot of really amazing things, so I want to give board members an opportunity to say anything they'd like to about the year we've had and the pleasure and the honor that we get to be board members of this school district. So whoever would like to start? Putting you on the spot, sorry. All right, Grad Dad, you're going first. Or you can talk about graduation.
So, yeah, I could probably talk for quite a while, but I think what inspired a thought was one of the photos of the graduation walk, always a great event. But I was in Brooklyn where I joined my daughter, she was a Brooklyn, Brooklyn Elementary School kid, and that photo there in the bottom middle of all the boys lined up was, it was just a really touching moment, because they were all, you know, obviously in class together through Brooklyn and held on to that friendship all the way up till high school, and they, as they finished up their walk through the school, they all pulled each other together and had that photo. So just one of the many touching moments this season. And graduation, the ceremony was just tremendous this year, as always. So big shout-out to the team that pulls that together and makes that move along so flawlessly. Just joyful, joyful event, as it should be.
You can speak if you want to, you don't have to. Go ahead, Heather.
I don't even have any graduates, but end-of-the-year, school year always makes me want to tear up, and so I'll just, I always want to leave from a place of gratitude. I just, I'll speak as a parent and as a board member. What an embarrassment of riches that Oregon School District has. I think about my own kids, I think about all of the district kids, and just to have such caring educators that create such relationships with our students is really just, I already used the word incredible, but I'll use it again, and just, you know, the last day of school, being there and seeing them say goodbye to all the kids and writing notes and, you know, from, I have to speak about FES, just because that's where, you know, that's where, what I know, but just from Ms. Majewski on down to every teacher, just providing not only a rich academic environment, just, but such a wonderful background. And I'll tell a quick, quick, quick story about Mr. Morvitz's 5th grade math. And earlier in the year, he gave my son, whose name is not Gary, a nickname, Gary. And now he's Gary to a lot of his classmates, which is totally fine. And it was recently my son's birthday, and so we were Dairy Queen ice cream cake, although I do know now that Oregon Froio does it, so if you also want to support locally in the Oregon side, as opposed to Pittsburgh, that's an option. But anyway, I said, what do you want on your cake? And he said, "Happy birthday, Gary." And then he said, and take a picture and email it to Mr. Morvitz. So I did, and so that's the kind of just, you know, connection. And even funnier story, when my friend, who was kind enough to pick it up, she called me, and she's like, "There's a mistake with the cake." I said, "Why?" She said, "It says Gary." And I was like, "All right." Anyway, so I mean, that is just like a small testament to just how wonderful and caring and capable our teachers are and staff in general. So, thanks.
All right, anyone else want to share anything? Go ahead, Mary, if you want to go, we'll go around the room.
Yeah, I mean, the graduation's always just so marvelous to participate in. Yeah, I mean, the graduation's always just so marvelous to participate in and, um, just knowing so many of the graduates for this year, um, and knowing that they, you know, so many of them are really well-equipped for their next step, um, makes me very proud to be part of the district.
Go ahead, Leslie.
So I'm going to try not to tear up at this one, okay? So I don't have a graduate, but I do have one that was going from sixth grade to OMS next year. And, um, so we did a celebration, sixth grade send-off at FES. And we did the color run, so where we got to throw chalk colors on all the kids and they had their, their class shirt with all the names on the back. And they had kickball and then they got popsicles. So it was a lot of fun, but it was really, really cool for me because, um, my sixth grader, now seventh grader, um, has not always been the best in social situations. Um, last summer, he was diagnosed with autism, ADHD, and, um, depression. And so it was a really rocky year the year before. And so shout out to the services team, uh, and especially Jen Casperson, the school psychologist at FES, who really lifted him up enough that he felt confident enough, once he got about halfway through the year, to share with his entire class what his diagnosis was and, um, the confidence that he went from fifth grade really being depressed and having a hard time and, um, overcoming that with the help of these lovely administrators and teachers. So just really shout out to all the teachers that really, really have lifted up not just my kid, because that's just one story and how many do we have in this district? But they really, really do care about each and every kid and it's just really, really cool to see.
Thank you for sharing that. Caleb?
So I'll just, uh, try to briefly, uh, reflect on a couple of things. I would follow what, um, Leslie just said and what Mary just said as well, um, as far as thinking about the school year and reflecting on service. This is my first, the finish, I'm finishing up my first year on the board and I've had a chance to look back and, um, I'm just really, um, happy to be able to serve the community in this way and, and be a part of, uh, all the work that goes into making this school district, um, as, as great as it is. Um, and I play a very small part in that, but, um, this has been my first year on the board and I got to participate in my second high school graduation ceremony as a member of the board, which was also really spectacular. I have two kids in the district myself. They're not, uh, my, my son just finished his first year at the high school and my daughter, like your son, is getting ready to transition to the middle school. And so, um, I just think about the future of my kids and also all the other kids in the district and, um, how many advantages, um, our district is able to give them. Uh, and it's just really, uh, uh, a joy to be a part of it.
I was, um, noticing on Facebook on the last day of school, you know, people are posting their last day of school pictures and picking up their kids from school and, and all of the fun things that go along with the end of the school year and the start of summer. And one of the posts was of, um, a family and the, the, the daughter came out and hugged the mom and immediately started to cry. And she was crying because she loves school so much that she was sad that it's summer. So we're doing something right, that we have kids who are, you know, elementary kids who are sad that it's summer. And honestly, it's a testament to their classroom experience and, and the teachers they meet and the friends that they have and the opportunities they have to like have their, their picture drawn and made into a sculpture of themselves they get to take home. And I don't know, it's just absolutely incredible, the way that our educators find ways to make learning fun, to make it relevant, and to have kids excited about it. It's absolutely amazing.
Thank you. I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but I think it's kind of important that everyone in this room hears that. So as a parent who is exiting this school district and, um, as a board member who will soon be exiting, I just, um, I think it's, it's really interesting how a lot of, um, our comments are about our kids and the experiences they have and the teachers that they have. But I want to talk about the people in this room. So Erica and Katie and Dr. Bergstrom and Andy and Gina and John and Shannon and Candace. You are the people that make this home. You hire the educators that we have here. You do the work every day and every night and every weekend and evenings. You are such rock stars and I want to make sure that you hear from all of us that when we're talking about teachers and buildings and experiences, you're the ones that are driving that. And so, um, I hope you never doubt for a second that you are some of the most important people in every kid's lives and every parent's life in this community because you've made the Oregon School District what it is and you've been here for a long, long time. And, and that's a credit to who you are as people and, and what, what you bring to this profession. So I just want to make sure that we say thank you to all of you because you are the reason that we can have these long superintendent reports. You've created the culture that Nathan talks about, that not every district has that with the OEA, that we can sit down and we can disagree, but we can have fruitful discussions. But you are people that are really about the greater good and there's a lot of greater good in this community and we are so fortunate. So I just want to make sure that you understand that we see that, we know that, and this community is very, very thankful for you. So, okay. I will entertain a motion because we are getting ready to go into closed session. So it is a consideration of a journey to closed session on item H1, H2, and H3 as provided under Wisconsin statutes 19.85. So if someone would please put that motion on the floor, that would be great. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? A motion carries seven zero, so we're in closed session at 7:52 and then we will be coming back into open session. So as my understanding, OCA Media will go into kind of a bit of listening to some music and then while we deliberate and then we will be coming back into open session. Okay, so the Board of Education is back in open session. So we have a consideration of three motions. One is regarding the 2024-2025 collective bargaining agreement. Uh, one is, uh, the approval of the 24-25 educator compensation schedule. And then the third is the, um, non-OEA-supported...
Support staff.
Support staff, sorry. So we'll take each motion individually and so we'll entertain a motion, a second, and then we'll put it on the floor for discussion. So let's start with the first collective bargaining agreement with the Education Association for the 24-25 school year, so somebody can put that motion on the floor.
I'll move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Oregon Education Association for the 2024-25 school year.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Gina, I'll go ahead and let you, um, so it's on public record, just in terms of what we, what the, what the proposal's about.
Thank you. As you heard Mr. Johnson explain earlier, um, we reached a tentative agreement with the OEA for base wages in the amount of 4.12%, which is CPI. So legally, we take that separately from the educator compensation schedule. Um, so would be looking for the board to approve the tentative agreement of 4.12% for base wages for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, so that is the motion on the floor. Any further discussion on that based on anything Gina said? Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinkritz? Ms. Wright? Ms. Bijak? Dr. Bush? Ms. Garrison? Dr. Lakuta? Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. All right, now we're moving on to the educator compensation schedule for the 24-25 school year. I'm going to start with Ms. Jona so she can explain that because it's a little bit more complex.
Thank you. So under the law, we are not allowed, it would be illegal for us to bargain anything above the 4.12%. But as a practical matter, what teachers really care about, right, is the number on their contract. And so you will see a draft educator compensation schedule in front of you for 24-25. Um, the union votes on this, which is, you know, their process to do and the teachers have approved this schedule. Um, from our lens, we do not bargain that because it is in addition to, it is above 4.12, but we certainly talk with them about it, um, given that one of the board values and one of our goals of the referendum was to retain and recruit, um, the highest quality educators. So we certainly talk about this. And I do want to thank, um, the OEA and the community, just want to continue to emphasize that, that we are in the middle of hiring season, as HR directors call it. Um, and having the referendum and the schedule that we do has just been absolutely invaluable to retaining the teachers that we have. And we are doing wonderful in terms of recruitment. Um, we haven't had anyone, um, turned down an offer because of salary. It's been for personal reasons, like, um, their family or where they live. And so I'm just really, really grateful for that. And we've had educators decide not to retire, um, because they are, are feeling like they are valued in terms of our culture and our salary schedule. So, um, with the schedule you see in front of you, I'm very proud to say that, um, every educator that is under this schedule will receive at least 4.5% in their pocket, meaning on their contract. So I would, um, ask the board to approve the schedule.
All right, can you also just chat for one second in terms of, Mary, as our good treasure, asked the total question in terms of the total cost of this and stays within the referendum budget?
Yeah, so the, the estimated total cost of the schedule that you'll see in front of you is 1.64 million. Um, the budget we had to work with was 1.7 million because that 3 million encompassed other staff as well as other things like transportation and 4K. Um, and so we have to be cautious because we're not done with hiring yet, so can't go over that number. Um, and so we'll have an estimate of where we land by the end of August with school starting September 3rd. Um, so hopefully we will be fully staffed before that date and time and I can give you a final update.
Okay, so could someone put a motion on the floor for the approval of that educator compensation schedule for 24-25 and then we can...
I just wanted to add one more thing just for our teachers who are watching, is that if we are under that budget, then we do mark that and we carry that into the next year to spend on staff compensation.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for cutting you off. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the educator compensation schedule as shown in the packet.
Okay, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Lakuta? Ms. Garrison? Ms. Bijak? Dr. Bush? Mr. Pinkritz? Ms. Wright? Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Great, thank you Gina and thank you to the OEA. Um, moving on to approval of salary and wage increases for the professional and support staff who are not in the Oregon Area Education Association Bargaining Unit for the 24-25 school year. So I'll turn that back over to Gina.
Um, so yes, we would be seeking a motion for the non-OEA groups to do a wage increase for them for that 4.5%. Um, that is the number that we had talked about when we were going into the school year in terms of budget reasons and the number that we had reserved, um, from the referendum dollars. So our professional staff, such as our nurses and our school psychologists and social workers, aren't on a schedule yet, um, but that is one of the goals that I have, um, moving forward. And then our support staff, which you'll see in Appendix B, um, they are on a schedule as well as our paraprofessionals. So the schedule you'll see in front of you did increase by 4.5%. Um, and you will see that some of our support staff have steps, step one and step two. Um, people move a step when they successfully complete their probationary period, which is a two-year probationary period. And then our paraprofessionals are similar to our teachers where they get paid more based on their educational level.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Okay, you are making the motion to approve the salary and wage increase. That's okay. We understood, I kind of put, asked for the motion of that regard, so we're good. Okay, is there a second to that motion, which is the professional and support staff wages who are not represented by the Oregon...
I'll make that second.
Education Association. Okay, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing done, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Bush? Dr. Lakuta? Ms. Bijak? Ms. Garrison? Mr. Pinkritz? Ms. Wright? Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, we have contracts and agreements that we're ready to move forward on for the 24-25 school year. Thank you all for all of your work on all of that. Um, and now the board will be moving into a second closed session. So I will entertain a motion to enter, or to consider a journey to closed session on item J1 as provided under Wisconsin statutes 19.85, and we will not return into open session for this one. So I will entertain that motion. Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session at 8:31.